Can we get the roll call?
Commissioner Dickerson.
Here.
Commissioner Seifert.
Here.
Commissioner White O'Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade.
Chair Hernandez.
Here.
If we can get approval of the Planning Commission minutes of October 5th, 2016, if everybody's had a chance to review them.
I will move for approval.
I would second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions?
I, myself.
Motion carries. With that, we're going to move on to the public comment. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business. Each member of the audience, any subject is limited to discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. Do we have any public comment? No? Okay. With that, we're going to move to the consent calendar. The consent calendar is approved with one motion. These items are read only on request of commission members. Should anyone, including the members of the public, wish to discuss or disapprove any item, it must be dropped from the blanket motion and considered as a separate item. Anybody want to pull any item? No? Okay. So that includes the Central Coast Wine Services Permit Amendment at 2717 Aviation Way. Can I get a motion?
I would make a motion to approve the consent calendar at today's meeting on the 19th of October.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. That, we move on to item number two, which is the Centennial Square Permit Amendment at the southwest corner of Miller Street and Plaza Drive. Staff?
Yes, this is a request for a permit amendment to extend the expiration date of a project the Planning Commission approved in 2013. This is the project site on the corner of Miller and Plaza Drive. The site is in the R3 district and the proposed project was approved to have 138 apartment units. This is the third extension that has been requested. Overall, the project is consistent with commission and staff direction and actions on recent apartment projects. Buildings are placed along the street with the parking to the side or rear. There's ample landscape provided in the project exceeding what the minimum requirements of the ordinance are. There's also, the primary vehicular entrance is off of Plaza, as shown on the screen, and that entrance, it terminates at a T-intersection where the common use building is going to be, which is a very good design feature. As listed in the staff report, there are a couple of areas of concern, basically around the perimeter of the project, on Plaza and Miller. And as noted in the staff report, we believe there's justification for removing the sound wall that is proposed on Miller because we have evidence that shows that the noise requirements can be met with standard construction materials. On Plaza Drive, there is open fencing on Miller. It was approved to have a sound wall. This was based on an old requirement, old zoning requirement, but as a plan development permit, you can have flexibility from certain zoning standards, and this is one where, in hindsight, we're recommending making that change. So instead of a sound wall along Miller, there would be an open fence between these two buildings with a gate for emergency access. That gate for emergency access is already in the approved plan as well. So that will result in the streetscape being more welcoming and residential-looking as opposed to just seeing a sound wall. We brought that up to the applicant, and they did not raise any concerns about taking out the sound wall, so the proposed amendment has that in the action. In the staff report, there's also a little discussion about the parking areas here on Plaza and here on Miller. If this were a brand-new project, we'd try to have it designed so that maybe the parking is pushed back a little bit. Notably, what that will do is pushing this parking back will cause that open fence to be more in line with the building, whereas right now, the open fence will actually come closer to the street in order to go around the parking. In the scheme of things, taking out the sound wall, we think, is going to be a big improvement for the community. Adjusting the parking is lesser of an improvement. The site has excess parking, so the change can be made, but overall, the staff recommendation is just to take the masonry wall out and allow the parking to stay as-is. We have suggested to the applicant that if they choose to want to make that change because they have excess parking, that they're able to do that if they proceed with the Overall, staff believes it's a very good project and has, with the wall issue being addressed, would have no concerns about extending the expiration date of this permit.
Thank you. Do you have a question, Mr. Dickerson?
Yeah, I have a question, Stephanie. So if you remove that sound wall on Miller, so with the, for instance, the lower two buildings, there is space between them, so you're basically saying that people could come and go from those areas as well? Or is there going to be some sort of blockage between the property and the buildings and then Miller and the sidewalk?
So the idea is to change the design of Miller to match what's on Plaza, and so on Plaza, there is an open fencing between the property line up to the building, and then there is no fencing between the building and the street. I don't believe the individual units have doors, but I believe there is one main access in this building that leads in this direction, and then in the other direction, likewise in each other building. So the one on Miller here, you see there is that opening here, so someone could exit this building and go straight to the sidewalk.
You know, when we first approved that, I know that there was some discussion with that main front entrance as far as potential security issues, and so by opening up that access there, I think that there might still be some additional concerns than before. You only had basically come from one area, you know, along Plaza, but by opening up these kind of little warrants, you might open yourself up to people coming and going that you're unaware of and don't necessarily want.
I think the applicant can speak to this, but my understanding is these will be locked and for residents only anyway, but the applicant, you know, can confirm that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Seifert?
So when we put in this wrought iron, we had an eight-foot block wall. So what are we saying the height of the new wall's going to be?
Six. It'll be six feet.
Six-foot wrought iron, like four-inch runs, ornamental tape?
It won't be wrought iron, it'll be wrought iron style, but an open fencing, we just refer to it as wrought iron because that's the image. It will be the same type of fencing that is proposed on Plaza, and I believe there are details in the plan that show that.
Is Miller Street not an entrance?
Miller Street is not an entrance, it is an emergency access point.
Fire department entrance.
For fire, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? Do we have any written communication, public comment from the audience? No?
Applicant.
Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Brian Schwartz of Planning Concepts. Have a couple slides I wanted to show about the project real briefly, and then I can address Commissioner Dickerson's question about the sound wall. The project is located in an area that is adjacent to other apartment buildings of similar densities and unit sizes to the south, and it's close to shopping and close to the bus line. It's a good location as an infill development, so I wasn't actually going to go through all of these slides, but again, this is the site plan that was shown earlier. And one of the things also that is not included in the site plan at the end of the approval process during the city council hearings, we worked with the school district to come up with an additional after-school care facility that would be attached to the recreational building. So that's an additional 1,000 square feet of space that can be used by the local school district to have kids go there and have a teacher or a monitor help them with their homework, possibly have computers in there, and that was a nice addition to the site plan. This is the elevation of that rec building, and then you can see off to the left-hand side is that additional space. With regards to, this is the color and materials of the architecture, and with regards to the sound wall, we believe that removing the wall is a superior design, having the open feel to it, having the wrought iron. From a safety standpoint, if there is a six-foot wrought iron across the frontage of that with no openings, I don't necessarily see that as a security issue. So whether there is a wall there or a six-foot wrought iron, the wrought iron has, I'm not sure the right word to describe it, but they're kind of spikes or points on top that I think deter people from entering the project. So from a security standpoint, I think matching what is off of Plaza Drive and without having an additional vehicular access would be sufficient. And we're available for any questions. We will also, with regards to looking at the parking during the plan check process, we'd be happy to take a look at those parking lots, see if there's some additional areas that we can remove some parking spots or shift things around a little bit to move the parking lot back to be more in line with the building frontage. I'm available for any other questions.
Thank you. Mr. Seifert has a question for you.
It's great to build the room. Who's going to fund the computers and who's going to pay for the teacher and how, is there some sort of a program or is this just a, we're going to build the room and figure it out later?
It's a little bit of both. It is the, it's called the ACES program, if you're familiar with that. The details of the funding arrangements have not been worked out. At this point, it is for further negotiation between the property owner and the school.
Excellent. Thank you.
Additional questions from the commission? No? Okay, so I see that the parking that the project provides for 305 parking spaces, but the minimum is 276. So you've increased it to 305, or are you planning on changing?
At this point, I'd have to go back to the landowner and discuss what they, you know, what their marketing plan is, what their, if some of them like to provide more parking for the residents, some like to provide less. I haven't had an opportunity to talk with them about that. Since it was a condition, how it was written as a, the applicant should consider this, I thought we would take that up during the plan check process and once the building plans are submitted. I will tell you, during the approval process, there was a little bit of a concern about the parking, and so that there isn't spillover. I believe the parking ratio right now is about 2.3 spaces per unit, which is a little bit over the two required, so, you know, I think we'd be happy to work with staff and find that happy median, or take input from the commission.
Thank you. I believe staff is okay with that, there's no issues with the parking. Am I correct?
Staff doesn't have any concerns with the amount of additional parking. There's a point where in a project, someone might propose so much extra parking that maybe it's not the best use of the land, but in this case, it's roughly 10% extra, and so if it ends up staying as-is, there are positive aspects to that. If we end up finding a way to adjust it a little bit, that may be positive as well.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions? Would you like to make a closing statement?
No, thank you.
Okay. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and if we're ready for a motion?
I actually have a comment. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I just did speak to some members of the public. I have a friend that lives down the street, and he was very vocal about this project and the traffic that it's going to create, and they're an older couple, and they just wanted to make sure that we were aware that more homes, more apartments, more traffic. And I told them there's going to be more traffic and they just need to kind of get used to that fact, but they did want me to express their concerns.
Other comments? Mr. Dickerson?
Yeah, I just wanted to, Brian, maybe you can convey this to your client, and this is, it's true for me for number four coming up as well. We discussed this in study session. You know, when we bring forth these extensions, one of the things that when we kind of look at the extension is, does it still fit within what our current thinking is as far as architecturally and all that other sort of thing? I'm not looking to add any conditions or anything along that line, but you might convey to your client that at least this commissioner would certainly be open to looking at, if not an entirely new makeover of architecture, because I know that's a big deal, but maybe a new skin of some kind. When we first approved this one and number four, there was a lot of, the tides certainly were towards Mediterranean, and now we're trying to diversify our architectural look and the feel of things, and so certainly if we have a large project like this one or item number four, and a client is open to or desirous of looking at, you know, their skin and saying, you know, it might be more interesting, or it might, you know, be better as far as an overall theme to move to some other thing, I'm sure that we would be open to taking a look at that if you wanted to present that, but it's not necessary if you don't want to.
I appreciate those comments, and I'll certainly relay them to the applicant and other projects as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Any more comments from other commissioners? Okay. So with that, if I can ask for a motion?
I'll go ahead and move that the Planning Commission approve Amendment A 2016-0025, the Centennial Square Permit Amendment at the southwest corner of Miller Street and Plaza Drive.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. With that, we're going to move on to item number three, which is Barcella Senior Apartments, and I will be recusing myself.
All right, I will be picking it up as the vice chair, so let's start with the staff presentation of item number three.
Yes, this is a two-part item, a two-part project. There's a request for a general plan amendment and zoning map amendment to change the parcel, which is currently, is commercial professional office, CPO, which would be purple on the screen, and to change that to high-density residential and the plan development R3 zoning district, which is the orange color. There's also a plan development permit for a senior housing project to go on the property, but procedurally, the Planning Commission first looks at the land use change, makes a recommendation to council, and then if council adopts that change, then the commission makes a final action on the plan development permit. So that is why the third recommendation on this particular item is to continue the plan development permit part of this to December 7th, which would be after the date that the council would act on the zone change. If the council turns it down, then we would just take the PD permit off the agenda. But overall, this is a site that in 2008 was approved to have a medical office project. That permit has had multiple extensions, and the applicant has come to the conclusion that, for a variety of reasons, medical office at this location, new medical office at this location, may not be as viable, and in 2015 came to staff and proposed amending the land use to allow this to be housing for a senior housing project. Since the proposal would have taken land for employment and turned it into housing, staff brought the concept to the commission and the council in late 2015 just to get kind of a general acceptance of processing the application to change the land use. At the time, there was no opposition to processing this application. So that brings us to this point where we have the proposed land use change as well as the conceptual designs of the PD permit. Overall, staff believes the site is a good location for senior housing. That map is in your packet, and it shows that the site is in close proximity to a number of transit stops, close proximity to medical services, retail, as well as the senior center. So for a lot of the key types of uses, that should be near senior housing. This site works for that. It also happens to be very close to the item we just talked about across the street on So the housing element cites an important need for senior housing of any type, because as lifespans increase, we are seeing that the population cohorts, and those are the age groups, those in the age group of over 55 is getting larger than in the past. So in many ways, this project would meet the housing element expectations well. Just for informational purposes, I want to note that while the applicant is proposing senior housing, making a recommendation on the GPZ to change this to multifamily residential does not in any way require senior housing as part of the land use or the zone change. So your action on the GPZ is to make this a site that can be multifamily housing. In reality, the applicant is proposing a senior housing project, it has designed it as a senior housing project, using ordinance and state law opportunities that if this were to convert into non-senior housing, the site design wouldn't work. More parking would be needed, there'd be too many units. So I'm not trying to introduce the idea that we don't know it'll be senior to throw any caution, it's just more informational because of new commissioners and just making sure it's clear that a GPZ isn't necessarily tied to a plan development permit unless the city puts something in place to do that, like a development agreement or something like that. While tonight you won't be acting on the plan development permit, I want to touch on the site layout and the architecture. Staff believes both are high-quality. The building is placed close to the street with the parking to the rear. There are no walls or fences along the frontage. There will be tree-lined streets. The architecture of the building has a lot of interest and varied materials. We'll go into that more at the PD permit hearing, but just overall, the site looks like a very good location for senior housing. You also note in the open area, there's a lot of amenities, a lot of variety of activities that are provided for the future residents. During the process, the applicant reached out to the single-family neighborhood to the south, as you can see, to the south of the project, it's R1 neighborhood. Since that meeting, and even immediately after the meeting, staff has not received any complaints or concerns from any of those residents about this project. So overall, staff believes that the GPZ and the eventual project are a good fit for this site. Staff performed SEQA analysis of the proposed land use change from office to housing, and the determination was made that there would be no significant environmental impacts from the land use change, and that took into account whether this is senior or regular apartment units or any other use that is allowed in the R3 district. So tonight, we're requesting a recommendation to the council on the GPZ and the SEQA analysis, and then as stated, if the recommendation is for approval, then we would recommend that the PD permit be continued to December 7th. That concludes the staff presentation. We're available for any questions.
Is there any question of staff?
I have a question. So in the written report, and then in what you just said tonight orally, you use the qualifier, "It's a good place for senior housing." If we take the senior out of it, do staff still recommend that this is a good site for another high-density residential project?
Multifamily housing is best placed where there are services or access to transit and roadways, so all the benefits that are provided by the location for being senior also would be there for if this had no age restriction. It's still near retail, still near medical services and transit routes. So either way, it is a good, it's viewed as a good location for multifamily housing.
And there's no concern that there's going to be a 138-unit project theoretically built a block and a half away, and then another 80-unit? Well, it wouldn't be 80 units if it was not senior, right?
Yeah. As it turns out, if it's not senior, then the maximum density is 52 units on this site. Putting higher-density multifamily housing along transit corridors is generally viewed as a very positive thing, because while bus transit isn't necessarily used by a high percentage of our residents, the probabilities are that if you put a greater number of people in an area, if 1% use it, that 1% is a bigger number now. So having the larger projects near the major streets is viewed as a positive. And because the project is designed so that the building is further away from the single-family neighbors and the parking lot is placed, you know, to the south, that allows us to have a buffer of trees, and the buildings are set back well more than if these were two-story, single-family homes. This is a three-story project, but they brought down the edges of the project to two stories as well as the added distance overall. Everything pretty much lines up to make this only a positive impact.
Thank you.
Mr. Seifert?
Thank you. When we're looking at the elevations, are we back to the height limitations again? We're going to be exceeding, we just went over that on a different topic. We're back to the cupola's being higher than the height regulation again?
Yes, I believe you are correct. I believe the small elements here may exceed the standard height. Let me confirm that. Yeah. It does, it does, but the new regulations that were recently passed would allow the Planning Commission to approve the adjustment, and it is just what's above the peak of the roof that is over the height limit.
That's why we just did that.
Yeah.
And when we're calling it senior living, there's two types of senior living. There's 55 and older and 62 and older? Do you know what we're talking here?
For the purposes of the permit that is coming forward, it would say it's for 55. Whether or not the applicant is doing the 55 or 62, ours would just say it has to be over 55.
I think it's up to the real estate department. Yeah, it just, there is a little difference. If you can get it down to 55, you get a lot more people coming. Thank you.
Yeah, kind of going off of what Ms. White O'Neil was talking about, I have a little bit of concern of what it is we're approving versus what might suddenly morph, and where is the applicant, you know, I take their word at good faith, you know, that they're going to be putting together a senior living thing. We're moving this from the medical office spaces and from the tax generator to something that we had looked at as being a benefit to the city, which is why we're making that shift, which was elderly living. And so what I would hate to see is it move from that and then a year or so down the road, or two years if there's another extension, that you end up making this next shift to apartments. So I guess one of the questions I have is, you So I guess one of the questions I have is you certainly, you notified the residents around, you didn't get any feedback on it. Would you re-notify if we suddenly went from elderly to elderly living to general apartments?
If the project changed to such that it didn't have an age restriction, that it was just more a regular apartment project, the project would have to be redesigned. It would have to shrink quite a bit because of the number of units and there's not enough parking. So it's basically a new PD permit, which is a new process, new notification and so on.
Okay.
And just, the, the issue you're raising about the uncertainty, this site is, it encapsulates it, you know, about, I don't have it off, in 2008, we thought this was going to be a medical office building. Things changed, market, you know, changed and such. We won't know if it will be built except right now, the economy is strong enough that these projects are moving forward and the other project on, at Westgate, the senior project, has filed for building permits. So they're, they're moving forward. So I think, as confident as one can be, I think it would take an external event that would, like a recession or something, that would cause a change in this project.
Well, you know how it is. I mean, we all up here get a little gun shy because we see that as a reoccurring theme a lot of times. Is there any way that we can, and I'm not even sure if this would be advisable, you could advise us on that, but is there any way we could lock it in that if it's not going to be senior, that it rolls back in some way? Or once we approve this, it's locked in for residential and that's the habit?
The, the, if there is a concern about the certainty of the project moving forward, there may be ways to increase the confidence level, but I don't think we'll ever be able to get to the point of absolutely for certainty being able to do that, only because once the site is zoned for housing and because the state has such a close eye on housing, we can't change it back without putting that capacity for units elsewhere in the community. Absent that, we could, we could enter into an agreement with the applicant that notes if you don't build this in next number of years, you know, the city plans to initiate a zone change to put it back. That is procedurally out there as a possibility. It's just, as I said, we'd have to, as part of the action of taking it from R3 back to CPO, we'd have to find some other site where those units could end up being at.
And does it have to be the 80 units or can it be the, whatever the lowest minimum number would be?
It'd be the, it'd be the 52, the 22 units per acre that the zoning allows without the density bonuses.
Okay.
Because obviously, this plot of land where it is worked very well as medical, as an adjunct to, to other facilities that are in there. And taking that from inventory and then turning it into something else, and then if it doesn't become that, something else becomes something entirely different, it becomes a little on the funky side. I would hope that it doesn't happen that way.
I believe we're kind of maxed out on medical spaces right now.
At the moment.
Yes. So for right now, that's probably why the applicant is moving forward with this. I know they, they're not a new builder to our town. They build a very nice product. And I would say that if he's gone to the trouble to come to us with a senior project, I'm fairly confident that's what it's going to be.
Okay.
Yes.
But on the other hand, this is a senior project that's market rate. And in our, in our work with the Community Development Block Commission, where we talk a lot about senior issues, the need for senior housing is for affordable senior housing, not necessarily market-rate senior housing. So my only concern, I like the idea of a project in this space. I think I like the idea of it being in a walkable area for any kind of resident. My just, my concern is, we approve senior housing, the market, there just isn't a market for 80 units of market-rate senior housing, then what happens to the project? But I know that's a separate issue that we.
And to a certain extent, that's them penciling out their, their business model.
Right, right.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any further questions for, okay, then why don't we hear from the applicant if the applicant is here? Here we go. Sure, if you could state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brian Tetley with Urban Planning Concepts at 2624 Air Park Drive, land use agent for the owner of the Barcella Seniors Apartments Project. And darn it if Peter didn't cover mostly key issues already. So I'll go quickly through our presentation. We have the project site, as the one commissioner noted, just across the street from the Centennial Site you were discussing. And just to point out, the zoning area, it's really mosaic in this area of the city. We have a single-family to the south, high-density sites, housing sites as we discussed, commercial, professional office and public facilities. You've got the cemetery, a lot going on here and really truly a mosaic of land uses in this area of the city. Just another look at the previously approved project, the medical office complex, that didn't pan out as far as the marketing of the project and as the discussion bore out, the market just isn't there for those, the use of the land there. The site plan, as we've seen, and Mr. Gilli pointed out correctly, that really thought through as far as where to locate the buildings and to minimize impacts to the single-family residential neighborhood to the south by getting those buildings up to the corner, having a good wide landscape buffer on that common property line with some of those single-family residences. In the, in the community meeting that was held on August 12th of last year, one neighbor came to the meeting and there was support for the project and they just wanted to make sure that, you know, they didn't have undue activity occurring on that rear portion of the site, which is nearest to their neighborhood. We strive to minimize that potentiality. This is just going through the different levels and you can see it's rather small for you to see, but the different floor plans of the units. About three-quarters one-bedroom units, so just under 600 square feet. So although a market-rate project, we have a substantial portion of the project that's for people who are wanting a more efficient-type unit, that under 600 square foot size. And we do have 19 units that are a little bit larger, up to the 950-square-foot range. And as far as the site plan with details that we've worked with, other than details we've worked out with staff, pretty much the same as when the city council looked at it last September and gave unanimous approval to move forward through this process. I heard the discussion about the architecture and we're really going for a kind of Craftsman-esque kind of feel, a modern interpretation of the Craftsman style with its focus on details, natural materials, the timber features you see and some stone wrap on the lower quarters of the building and a good natural color palette we think would be a good addition to this area of the city. Here's the other elevations, this is the south elevation. They'll be facing the neighbors, but again, with a substantial setback from those neighboring property owners. So that really, we feel that this project really supports the city goals, as mentioned, of providing senior housing with no additional concessions or reductions requested and above the, you know, taking advantage of the state density bonus law for projects that are 55 and over. We think it provides an upscale senior housing option in a location that's really well-sighted for this type of use. The conceptual review by the city council went very well and got unanimous approval there. And as staff mentioned, we had no environmental impacts through the Sequa environmental review. So we look forward to your working with us on this project and through the city council and look forward to seeing you on December 7th and of course, here for any, any other questions.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I have one question.
Mr. Seifert.
You did mention 55 and older. So is this a 55 and older project?
Yes, it is.
Okay, because they do have limits where it jumps up to 62 and older. So this is 55 and older?
It is. We wanted to provide the broadest age, age group to take advantage of this.
I have two.
Ms. White.
I have two questions. One is, so the 55 age, does that mean just one resident has to be 55 or does everybody living in the unit have to be at least 55?
I see the attorney reaching for his mic.
Welcome, Commissioner White O'Neil.
Thanks.
The state law covers this, so it's not really up to the applicant.
Right.
Only one member has to be 55 and, and pretty much there's qualified caregivers or family members. And then perhaps the 55-year-old person dies, the other people can remain even though they're not 55. It's all covered in state law.
Okay, great. And then the second question is, so we keep talking about senior housing. Are you planning to include any sort of accessibility features in the apartments or aging-in-place features to make them appeal to older seniors or is it just the age restriction?
I think at this point, it's just the age restriction. I can't, I can't tell you for sure if there aren't features that are going to be designed internally in the units that would, that would smooth that for people of certain abilities or not. But as far as, you know, things like, you know, memory care and that kind of thing, getting into more medical.
No, no, I'm talking about, you know, the way the doorknobs are functioning and the way the showers work so that you can get in and out easily as a senior. Is that, I noticed it's also three stories. Is there going to be an elevator?
Yes, two elevators.
Okay.
On the site and there'll be, adjacent to those are going to be trash chutes so people don't have to run down to a dumpster. They can be on their floor and dispose of their recyclables and waste that way.
Okay.
Mr. Seifert, did you have any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Were there any written communications, public comment? No? Okay. Then I will bring it back to the commission and are there any comments or otherwise, we need a couple of resolutions and a motion?
I'll make a resolution.
Okay.
Number 2701, recommend that the city adopt a negative declaration for the Barcella Senior Apartments.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Now, again, a roll call.
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner White O'Neil?
Aye.
Vice Chair Dickerson?
Aye.
I'd like to make another resolution, number 2701, recommending that the city council approve a general plan, land use and zoning map amendment, GPZ 2016-002.
I'll second it.
Okay. Can I get a roll call?
Commissioner Seifert?
Aye.
Commissioner White O'Neil?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And by motion, I'd like to make a motion that we continue the planned development permit, number PD 2016005, to December 7th, 2016.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extinction? Motion carries. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will get the real power back if she hasn't dozed off. Take a nap?
Yep.
Okay. We're going to move on to item number four, Sevilla Permit Amendment at 2770 Santa Maria Way. And if we can get the staff presentation.
Yes. First, let's start with the project site. Seems like, like the others, this is along Miller Street, although this is much further south at Santa Maria Way. This site was originally approved back in 2007. The, the portion in yellow was approved to be 69 single-family homes on individual lots. The portion in between the site and Santa Maria Way is 3.2 acres that was approved to be of commercial uses with the idea that this would be a horizontal mixed-use project. The site plan here illustrates that to a certain extent, that here's the project itself and then here's the 3.2 acres that are, that has not been designed and has no approvals yet. What the applicant is asking for is an extension of the planned development permit for the homes. This is one of the longest-running permits that are on record right now. This is the eighth extension request. And unlike the Centennial Apartments, this is a planned development permit and there's also a tentative map. The tentative map splits the property into individual lots for each house. The state has automatically extended maps during the late 2000s and early 2010s because of the recession. So that, the map has not needed any extensions from the city to stay alive. But the map is going to expire in December of 2017. The applicant can ask the city for extensions of maps on the same one-year increments that we have on the PD permits. But for us, right now, we're looking at whether to extend the planned development Just for information, since the map is still valid, if the planned development permit is not extended, then the parcels and where they're located and the internal streets are all still valid from the map. The applicant would just have to get a new planned development permit to either redesign the homes or use the same design, but just come through the process again to get the architecture and landscaping approved. So effectively, in staff's opinion, it makes no sense to not approve the extension for the PD permit so long as the map is still alive. But having said that, since the map is going to expire at the end of next year, we have let the applicant know that there are, while we have no concern with the number of units and the fact it's ownership housing, we do have some concerns, as we described in the written report, about the layout of the units and the layout of the shared parking. If this were to come forward right now, staff would be recommending a different design. Hopefully, still with the 69 units and still ownership, but instead of isolating the guest parking in certain spots, we'd like to see if, if the roads can be winded a bit to maybe have on-street parking on, on one of the sides. These are all private streets, so they don't have to meet our city standard for width. But right now, they are so, they're narrow to the point where it's, only has enough room for a car to, a car to go each way on it. There's no on-street parking. So if you're a guest of this house, you have to hope there is guest parking here. If you're a guest of this house, there's a little bit of guest parking here, but the majority of it is right here and that's just not as convenient as, as we think it could be. Plus, a lot of the units are pushed pretty far back from the street and while it may be on a shared driveway, we think there's a neighborhood benefit to having the front doors more on the street to create a neighborhood feel. There may not be a way to design this property so that every single unit has that, but we think there's a way to make it so that more of them have that. So we have let the applicant know that from staff's perspective, if the project's not built prior to the map expiring and this next extension, that we're likely not going to recommend any future extensions. But once again, we would fully support ownership units and the number of units that's being proposed, just in a different layout. That, once again, since the map is still valid though, staff is recommending approval of this extension and staff's available for any questions.
Do we have any questions for staff from the commissioners?
So as far as timing goes, this is October of 2016. We're going to, if we approve an extension, it'll be till October of 2017, but then the map will expire in December of 2017. So the applicant will come forward theoretically with another extension. So, the applicant will come forward theoretically with another extension in October, and using the same logic, the map will still be valid for two more months, theoretically, right?
In the big-picture sense, yes. While the hearing is being held now, the expiration of the permit was actually in June, but the applicant had filed before it expired. And our practice is, so long as you file in time...
We'll get you on the agenda.
You're valid, and so, the expiration of this extension will be June of 2017.
Okay.
So, if the applicant may come forward in June of 2017 and say that, "I want another extension," what staff would recommend to the commission at that point, and this is hypothetical, but in order to make their map valid, they need to record it. They need to provide lots of engineering drawings and such. If they haven't started that by June of 2017, they won't make it.
They're not going to make it, okay.
So, having that gap isn't actually likely going to be a problem.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, do we have a presentation from the applicant?
Good evening, Brian Schwartz, again, Urban Planning Concepts. It's just a vicinity map here, showing the location outlined in red. It does seem like a very appropriate location for residential, small lot, single-family. It has the parks right behind it to the east. It's got the design of it similar, in some ways, to Mission Creek condos right to the south of there, in the sense that there's residential in the back and some commercial up front. It seems to work fairly well for that project. And this project would have about double the amount of commercial frontage. So, I think it would be a nice combination, a mix of use there, for having some services in that area, for this project, as well as all the other residences. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry. He's gone over the site plan already. We'd say the question regarding the filing of another extension, if...and I'm going to go out on a limb here, but I'm going to say, if the landowner has not made significant progress with submitting their public improvement plans, a final map, building plans, if they have not made a serious commitment to partner with another builder by the early next year, they're just not going to have time, and the project is going to be...the plan development permit will essentially die. So, I know that they have tried numerous times to partner with various builders, developers, companies, do joint ventures, and it just hasn't panned out. So, they start this sort of relationship with a company, it falls apart, they go on to the next partner to see if they could work out an agreeable agreement, and that's kind of one of the reasons, since the recovery of the recession. But again, I would guess, unless they take some very serious proactive steps within the very near future, they would need to strongly consider a different use for the property. Or, not different use, a different plan. There was a previous plan that was approved, that had 95 townhouse units on it that were three stories, and with the commercial up front. This plan seems actually that would be more beneficial. It seems like it fits in well with all the single families to the east of it. Not to say that the townhouse project wouldn't work there as well, like similar to a Mission Creek, but I'm surprised it hasn't been developed. It seems like entry-level homes, I would think that would be at a good price point for people in a good location. So, I'm quite surprised it hasn't been built. And that's just the elevations there. Again, I can make a note to them that if they'd like to change the elevations to something other than Mediterranean, that would be encouraged. And that's my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from the commission? No questions, thank you. We don't have any written communication or slips for public comment.
No.
We do have a...
My Chairman Hernandez, commissioners, I'd like to request...
If you can state your name and address.
Yeah, S.E. Wagner, and I live just east of the project.
And I'd like to remind you, you have three minutes for public comment.
Right.
Thank you.
I'd like to request that the commission deny the request to extend this permit. This has been going on for, like, now we're talking about nearly a decade. And because of the city's sparse noticing of only going out 300 feet, most of us who live in that neighborhood weren't contacted that this project was going to be considered by the Planning Commission nine years ago. So, we didn't really have an opportunity, or even knowledge, that it was going to come through this commission and our ability to put our two cents in. I have some concerns. One is the setbacks of those homes along Sunrise Drive. I think those homes are way too close, and it's going to provide a canyonization of Sunrise Drive right across from Mission Park Development. And I think that those homes should be moved farther into the development, so that that doesn't occur. If you look at the road there coming off of Santa Maria Way and Sunrise Drive, those homes, two-story homes, are going to be with the three-story development at the Mission Creek Commercial Development, and then the two-story homes backing right up to Sunrise Drive, it's going to create a canyonization of Sunrise Drive along there. And I don't think that's a very wise thing, and I don't think that that protects the integrity of the neighborhood. So, I would request, number one, that that be dealt with. The other thing I'm uncertain on is, there's an existing bike trail that extends from the Rotary Centennial Park through the existing site right now, and I'm unclear if that bike trail is going to be maintained with this project, if it's developed. The other concerns I have is the problems that we're currently having with the Mission Creek development. So, I talked to Roger Brown, who's a member of the Planning Commission, when this went through, the Mission Creek development, about some of the issues that came up then. Now, they're not maintaining their drainage basin. I've been in touch with the city. And if you go down Santa Maria Way, across from Kmart, where the drainage basin for the Mission Creek development is, the weeds are about waist-high, and they've been allowed just to let that drainage basin go. And it's very unsightly at the beginning of our neighborhood. So, I don't know what the plans are for this one, or what standards you guys impose on the projects, but it seems like the high-density development that was approved at Mission Creek, 10 years later, it's not looking very good in our neighborhood. And I have concerns that this one, if it goes through, isn't going to look very good either. And this is the cornerstone cap of our neighborhood. So, this is an impression that a lot of people are going to draw up when they come into the neighborhood, and I'd like to see a much higher standard for the development, both by Urban Planning Concepts and the people that are, you know, the ideas that they have for developing the lot. Some other concerns is that, nine years later, 10 years later, the people have changed in the neighborhood, and I feel like the project should come through the whole process again. They had an opportunity, and despite the economic downturn, waiting 10 years on your project really has denied public input. Essentially, that's what's going on. The people that now live in the neighborhood had no opportunity to take part in the discussions about this development, which, again, will be an important aspect to our neighborhood. It's right on the beginning of the neighborhood. And the Mission Creek development there, the commercial development has been allowed...it's very unsightly. I don't know if you guys have driven down Sunrise Drive, but it looks like, with all due respect, the pink and the purple lights that they have flashing at the massage parlor they have there, is like, it looks like a whorehouse. So, I don't know what standard you guys apply to that. But I would just request that we deny it, and send the project back, and let it come through again, when the public has a chance to provide some meaningful input. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to respond to those concerns?
Please. 300-foot noticing is standard for all projects within the city. I believe, and staff can correct me, but as part of the time extensions that have been going on for the last 10 years, there are notifications sent out every single year that a time extension has been applied for. So, there is...it seems like there's been ample opportunity for the residents to be aware of this on a yearly basis, and to be notified of these extensions, the project, and to be able to voice concerns. I have not heard any concerns over the years regarding some of these issues. And perhaps the notices don't go farther, far enough out into the adjacent community, but that's just a standard city noticing requirement. Regarding the canyon effect, I'm not sure if I agree with the gentleman regarding Sunrise Drive. If you see the aerial photograph there, you'll see that even the buildings are set back pretty far at Mission Creek, off of Sunrise Drive, and then the one building is right on the corner there. I think it's a two-story building, but...three-story building, but even still, it is just the little triangle piece on the corner, so that it does not go all the way up Sunrise Drive. The site plan, I believe, has a pretty decent setback, landscape setback, off of Sunrise Drive. I don't know what it is, if it's 20 feet or 15 feet, but would be pretty typical for a plan development of this type off of a local collector's street. Regarding the drainage at Mission Creek, it doesn't apply to this project, so I can't really comment on that. And so, you know, we'd be happy to talk with this gentleman and hear his concerns, or even talk with the other members of his community. If, whether this project goes forward, or whether a new project comes forward, we want to hear their concerns and make sure that we can, you know, try to accommodate a mutual agreement.
Okay, thank you. With staff, yes?
I do want to confirm that every extension had a notification aspect to it.
Excuse me, sir?
So, each had that. If there is a concern with the amount of noticing, that's a policy issue that, you know, can always be looked at. But for each extension, it met the rules at the time. On the drainage basin, that complaint did...was shared also with our department, and there's a condition for Mission Creek that they need to...a general condition that they need to maintain their site and such. So, I believe that is being addressed. And the trail is a city easement. We have it now, and so, the trail that goes through there is not going anywhere unless it's approved by the city, and I can only see that changing, that possibly the city might agree to change the alignment. If, instead of a straight shot, maybe it curves a little bit, but it's an existing trail, existing easement, so whether the property stays vacant or is developed, that needs to be part of it.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the commission? Or additional questions?
I live in Sunrise. I don't see the same problems as you do with this project, or with the canyon effect. Haven't noticed the retention basin that you're talking about that hasn't been maintained, but I probably just missed it. I don't have a problem with the structures that are on the corner. I drive by them every day. Haven't really noticed a sign, haven't been out there really at night, didn't know that it looked like a whorehouse.
Maybe your standards...
But we do have some sign ordinances in town, and we do have zoning enforcement that can definitely take care of any signs that aren't to city standards. This isn't my favorite type of project. It's very high-density, short streets, little streets. We've got a couple of them in the city. I'm sure this developer, he purchases property, I believe in 2006, at a premium, and I believe he's been trying like heck to do something with it ever since. It's very difficult to develop a piece of property and make money. I know everybody thinks that you just buy a piece of property, you're going to be rich. But I know that they've probably been struggling with making this thing pencil out. I do appreciate you coming and telling me your concerns. I don't share all of them.
Mr. Seifert, do you share your concern?
Mr. Wagner, you've given...Mr. Wagner?
Have you had any events around that property for 10 years, and weeds that are over waist-high?
Mr. Wagner, you were given your three minutes. Please be respectful of the commission.
If the commission would be respectful of the input?
We are trying to address all the concerns, and if we get interrupted by the audience, we cannot develop our thoughts and inform the public what the commission thinks. So, I'd appreciate if you would stop interrupting. Thank you.
You seem to be very upset about this project, and there's nobody else in the room that shares your concern.
Well, I'd agree with you next time.
As far as a fence going around this project, yes, I agree with the fence. I want it fenced, and projects need to be fenced, when they're empty.
I'm going to go ahead and ask for a five-minute recess.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
I really love following the standard.
We're not allowed to engage the public back.
Yeah, they... At the...at the center? Oh, he's the same, he's the governor? Gotcha.
What telecom here?
He's got some issues. Yep. I missed that, yeah, I'm sorry. So, I am glad that I did get to get the end after the same day that you faced that. I don't have any problem.
Okay, I should have my own. Well, just so far, that happened, it's pretty good. Okay. Okay. You're on camera, turn on the camera. Okay. And there's that final line, responding to what the public's saying, you know, we're going to turn, and... And... Sorry. Okay.
Okay, we're going to get back on the record. So, we had to close the public hearing, and now we're listening to comments by the commission. Mr. Seifert?
That was interesting. He is a concerned citizen, and I do take his comments to heart. This is my neighborhood. I don't have a problem with this site, or what they're proposing for it. It is a little bit smaller density than I like, and I wasn't involved with the prior Planning Commission, so I'm going to abide by what they have stated, as far as the recommendations. I don't have an issue extending this thing, and I think that by extending it to the extension of the PD permit, I think it will come to a head in a natural way. It's either going to be built, or it isn't. Thank you.
And I think staff has made it clear that this project, as it is, needs some refinement, and isn't going to be approved anyway, I mean, with modification. So, it's an organic process that's constantly being reviewed, so I feel confident that our job here tonight is just to extend the option to match the mapping deadline, which I feel we're prepared to do that.
Mr. Dickerson?
Yeah, I...
Yeah, I, Brian, you know my concerns, and so I don't need to beat that dead horse. But I think that, I think it's how to use it or lose it, it's the state, and as the others have said, I think you have, there's an organic element that's taking place that probably will take care of this shortly. So I don't have any problems with extending this at this time.
I think the three main issues that were brought up were the setbacks have been addressed. The bike trail does belong to the city. It does have an easement, so that was addressed. And then also, the Mission Creek development has been addressed by staff, so I believe that all the major concerns were addressed, and for that, I do not have any concerns with the project. Okay, with that, can I get a motion?
I'll go ahead and move that we approve Amendment A 2016-0023, the Sevilla Permit Amendment at 2770 Santa Maria Way.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Epstein, motion carries. With that, we're going to move on to item number five, which is Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment for the State-Mandated Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. Staff?
The commission will probably remember seeing this on the agenda many times in the past, and it's been continued for a variety of reasons, because its priority has not stayed up as far as major projects that we've been working on, but we are close to bringing this forward. As noted in the report, there are some clarifications we want to put in about the city's and the commission's expectations about landscaping, and we want to share that with the local landscape architects and development community before it comes to hearing. Beyond that, the text amendment is really just going to be about putting in place what the state is already requiring us to implement already. It is a challenging process, but the goal is to make sure that landscaping isn't using more water than it needs to. There are provisions in the state regulations that, for example, if you're a school or a city who's going to have fields for athletic use, that the water restrictions aren't there in those cases. But if it's not being actively used, the state wants the water usage of landscaping to be as low as possible. So moving forward in new developments, you're not going to see a lot of lawn. Admittedly, that change has already started to occur anyway, but now there's going to be mathematical equations of the amount of irrigation you can do on a site, and we're going to have to be checking to make sure the math works and such, and state reporting and auditing and all those other fun things that have been imposed. So we gave you as much information as we could. We gave you the actual state regs in case you want to look at them. They are challenging to read, but we're going to be working on making them as simplified as possible in our guideline handout. With that, we are asking that you continue this one more month to November 16th, at which point we will have the feedback of the local landscape architects and development community.
Thank you.
I do. It says to see Exhibit A. Am I missing Exhibit A?
We, I see now that we failed to label the attachment as Exhibit A.
Is that Exhibit A?
But yes.
Yeah, it's hard to read.
Yeah.
Okay. I just didn't know if you had a pretty picture or something.
No, just a lot of dense text.
Yeah, well, we're, we get more and more of this every year in the building industry.
Any other questions?
Yeah, just quick. Peter, you're sure you guys only need a month? I mean, you've got the holidays and everything. You don't want to push this thing to the first of the year, sometime in there, January, February?
We certainly can, because--
I mean, it's your call. I just want to say, I mean, are you guys pushing yourselves, given we've got the holidays coming up?
I think part of what we are looking at is that this commission is fairly up to speed on at least the big picture of this, as well as our council, up to speed that this is the state's imposition, and next calendar year, there's, there could be lots of new faces. And so could we, could we benefit from more time? Sure, but if we really need it, we'll do what we've done and ask for another one.
Pardon?
Yeah, ask for another extension.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay.
So the paragraph that says it wasn't, we don't know how we justified not doing it?
So in 2010, the state amended their landscape rules, and cities were required to update their rules to meet that or justify that our existing rules already did it or better. Our city said our existing rules were equivalent or better. And just for honesty, I had to make that statement in the report.
Yes. Thank you.
Additional comments? No questions? Okay, can we get a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that the planning commission continue the zoning ordinance, text amendment Z 2015004 to November 16th, if possible. Is that legal?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Epstein, motion carries. With that, we're going to move on to other business. Number six, report on city council actions.
I don't have any information.
No? Okay. Do we have any oral reports from the planning commission and staff? No? Okay. We do have a new planning commissioner. We'd like to welcome her.
Oh, glad to be here.
Very exciting meeting. And with that, we're going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.